Okay, hello everyone, welcome to today's council meeting, Thursday, August 1st, 2024, 6:30 PM. Roll call please.
Mayor Elma Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio.
Present.
City Treasurer Michelle Lopez.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, please rise for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a presentation, recognition of Christian and Jose Avalos MMA athletes. We have them here today, so thank you guys for being here. I did attend their Christians' fight and still champion again, that's great. I love the fact that, I don't like to see the hitting and the kicks, but I'm so proud of you, of all your accomplishments. Lot of hard work and dedication to stay physically fit because you, you know, cannot just, if you get tired, they can take over and bring you down and that's why it's always like, "Okay, I can't see, did he make it?" Because it was a great fight. I mean, I saw it, it was, again, like I said, it was really hard for me to watch because I don't like to see people get hurt, but I know it's a sport. But we are proud of you and we are happy that, you know, you're part of our Parlour community and we have a lot of great athletes here, you know, there's, you know, you have also Jim Cropper and then there's other sports like in soccer that people play and also we have musicians. So I'm so proud of a lot of the kids that actually seek a sport or a field like this to help them, you know, grow in all aspects of life, you know, because this is dedication is strict, being strict and committed is the thing that, it's really hard to do and not that easy to fulfill your goals and your accomplishments because I know that you've been working on this for several years. I don't know how long it's been for you doing this, but I think since high school, right?
Yeah, graduated high school.
I think, yeah, and so congratulations to you. We have a certificate of service. This award is presented to Jose Avalos and we do have one for Christian as well. On behalf of the city of Parlour, we would like to recognize you for your representation of this community throughout mixed martial arts. Keep up the good work from the mayor and council. Would you like to come up?
Oh, do you?
Yes. So we have Jose and Christian. And we also have these little gifts for you here. Yeah.
Take this one with the pen.
Yeah, I think, oh, that one doesn't have it. I think that was for us, um, okay. If we can take pictures, it would be great. You can bring your mom up here too, I would like. ¿Quieres pasar? We were both, we were both at the fight and we were both like not wanting to look. So Jose, are you gonna get ready too? I think you're gonna be fighting pretty soon too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Look it. Those are amazing, huh?
The one with your mom with you guys.
Sí.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, sí, sí, sí.
And bring her in too.
Is that belt even, how heavy is that? I can imagine. Oh my god. Ay dios, I don't know. Go forward. Have you ever weighted?
No, I haven't weighted.
Oh shoot, it's heavy. So you get, so every time you win, you get a new one? Oh wow, so that's.
Oh wow, do you wear it?
Oh, I know, that's what I'm telling you. I know it's very, it's not easy, that, those fights are very, physically fit you have to be, so, yeah, I know, and it's like, oh my god.
Me and Jose are classmates.
Oh, okay.
We're the same class, that's in 2009. That's right, yeah.
Vente a tomar foto. Pásale. ¿Cómo estás? Bien?
Hello, hello.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, gracias a ustedes. Una más, una más, una más, una más.
Thank you for being here. I know it's, you guys are always busy, so I know it's not. Yeah, that's one way. Always, and I know that you always met, you always mention Parlour all the time then.
Thank you guys.
Gracias a ustedes. Okay, so.
We'll see you guys, thank you.
Bye. Thank you for being here. All right.
Can I, so. Mayor, can I, we wanted council to request moving an item on the agenda? Can we ask the council to? Yeah. Item four. Is that the request?
Moving it to the beginning?
No, to the end, that's at the beginning, at the end of.
You said item nine?
Four.
No, four, four. For two, no, 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 for after closed session and open session, because it's a contract, so it'll be an open session after the closed session.
My question is, because it's a contract, the public has the opportunity to question actual agreement.
Correct.
And so, to me, since it's already agendized with the public, if there's no question, then we can just move it to the end, ask in closed session, if you want to do closed session.
No, not in closed session, no.
After closed session.
After closed session, when we come back.
Now, does it give a lot of the people the opportunity to be here, because a lot of our public leaves once we go to closed session, so then if we move it to the end, then we should have had a closed session at the beginning of the meeting, so this way it would have allowed our public to question any item that's on here, because if we put it at the end, they leave and they don't know about it.
Well, it's on the agenda, it's properly.
That is on there at the beginning, is what I'm saying, so since it's already on the beginning for us to be transparent and not move it to the end, so that way the public doesn't leave.
The concern is that there is, that the item number four relates to an item that is in closed session and the council would benefit from the discussion of the closed session item before it considers entering into the contract.
So is this about, like, I don't know, she was able to ask you if it's an update?
There will be an update.
So you have information to update us on it?
There will be an update in closed session, yes.
From you?
Yes.
All right, so if you're able to stay here, something the council, they want to move that to the end and then waste time for closed session.
Does that need a motion?
Yes.
You're, yes, you're moving.
I want it on the record that it's being moved to the end, so they do, so I just want to make sure that there has to be a motion. It doesn't necessarily count, but I'd be wrong, but I'd just would like it for it to be on the record that it's being moved to after the closed session.
I motion.
Motion by Kathy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Diego Avalos, favor?
Mine.
One of them. So now we can move on to the.
Public comments.
So any public comments at this time, I think you were wanting to address the council for the unwired.
Unwired broadband next gen fiber project that we have proposed to the city. It's my understanding that Javier and Jeff.
Do you mind speaking into the mic, please?
Sorry. It's my understanding that through the city engineer and the city planner, that our blanket permit, all the paperwork is in order, as well as the lease for our central office right outside of city hall here, that all the paperwork is in order, as well as our master encroachment agreement. It's my understanding, it's been reviewed by legal and that everything is good to go. And I just want to make a presentation today to the city. So dear esteemed city council members, Mayor Beltran, Javier, Jeff, and fellow residents of the city of Parlour, I stand before you today to announce an exciting development, unwired broadband next gen fiber. We're poised to commence construction in the city with, you know, approval of the agreements I just mentioned a minute ago, to build within the city's right of ways and public utility easements. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the city council, you know, to the mayor and the rest of the city staff for, you know, considering this project, you know, for approval. This collaborative public private partnership, it exemplifies how great things can be done, you know, when people work together. A project overview, our $6 million initiative aims to connect the residences, schools, businesses, and anchor institutions to next generation high speed fiber with the city's approval. We would like to commence construction, kick off construction in September of this year to complete in March of next year. And of course, keep an eye out for our next gen fiber logo trucks, et cetera, while we're out there doing construction in your right of ways. Some of the service details, each residence will receive one fiber, each school and anchor institution will receive two fibers, you know, for our high speed service. Our gig speed symmetrical service, we priced it $99 per month for residences and $299 for businesses with guaranteed speeds. Customers can expect blazing fast next gen generation speeds. We're going to offer up to five gig symmetrical at launch with the potential, if there's, you know, a demand for it, to go up to 10 gig symmetrical speeds anywhere in the city. Our coverage, nearly 4,000 locations in the city will have access to our high speed fiber service. This includes numerous apartment complexes. I think in this budget, we've approved 500 apartments to be built as well. Of course, any apartment complex that wishes to be on next gen fiber, they just have to reach out to us and we'll reach out to them to do an access agreement. I want to thank you for your continued support as Parlour enters a new era of connectivity, unprecedented innovation, and, you know, sparked by unlimited speed fiber. Thank you.
Thank you. So now you'll be coming back on the 15th with the agreements and Jeff and Javier already will be working on that.
Correct.
Be putting it on the agenda, so the last council knew about this already happening because you've been presenting it to us since then. So the new council, I'm sure you guys are still aware of this, about the unwired.
I want to say he presented already.
Yeah, before, yeah, this, I think last year or two. So we're just going to go through that process and now we just need the contract to be done and then put it on the agenda so we can, you know, support it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anytime, thank you, thank you so much. Is there any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Raúl, I live here in Parlour. I want to say, first, on your schedule, you have invocation, was that overlooked or you just don't want to do that?
We don't have to do it, we just put it there in case there's somebody that wants to do the invocation.
Okay, because I just saw you just like go right over, so I just.
It's been done like that for years, yes.
It would be helpful, be nice if you asked somebody before you start, just instead of bypassing it, you might want to ask. And also I want to give a big thanks to my representative, Diego Garza. I brought up a situation that I believe we have in our neighborhood and he's already taking what I think is corrective measures, so a big thank you and I hope it helps out the traffic. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, is there any other comments? Hearing none, we can move on to the next item and that will be consent calendar and I do have an item to pull, so is there anybody else that would like to pull for the consent?
I do.
And that is?
Item number two.
Okay, the minutes, and I'm pulling the check report. Any other item? Okay, hearing none, so do you have a motion to approve item number three?
Actually, can we discuss number three?
So you want to pull that one too?
Yeah, and it's only for because of the.
Okay, so let's just start with item number one. So I have a question because it was brought to my attention, which is on the check report for, for the 681 and 49 cents for reimbursement. And my question is, who authorized it, what was purchased, and out of what budget is it coming from? What was purchased, and, um, out of what budget is it coming from? It's, uh, item number, it's on the first page. It's C A R zero-three. Six hundred and eighty-one. It's on the first page. Oh, do you, you don't? I have it on the first page, so, I don't know. He doesn't even know what page he's on yet. Is it, you're on the first page?
No, I gave him the break.
All right. No.
It's six-three-two-four-one, I think?
It's, so you're, okay, you're looking at the other page. I'm looking on the first page for that. Okay, I see. You're looking at the detailed.
He wasn't at the detailed one.
Yeah.
What does it say on the detail one?
Your mic's not on, chief.
Yes, there was a request, a request to use a credit card for a, a certain, uh, special occasion, and I, I'll have to reflect back on that, because I don't remember exactly right now. I, I can look into it.
A special occasion for who?
Or, it's, uh, this is for the, um, yeah, the preschool. Is that, is that what it was? Okay. Yeah, I know we, we talked about it.
So.
There was a request.
So, and how many items were purchased, uh, from that six hundred?
How many items?
Yeah, because that's, it's, if it's teacher appreciation, was that for food, or was that for gifts to the teachers?
Right. So, like I said, I'll, I'll have to look at that at, at length and more detail, but, uh, generally, that was the idea, is to appreciate and help retain and, and for morale purposes. So, in, in cases like that, on occasion.
Did you guys check with the Department of Ed, is that something that can be used from the Department of Education's funds?
Right. Um, no, and I believe purchases under five thousand.
But we still, we still have to, because even though if it's, that's just, that you don't need their approval. Let me, that's, if it's under five thousand, you don't need their approval, because it's a larger expense. But it still has to meet their guidelines on what you're going to spend the money from the Department of Education, because you can't just spend their money, taxpayers' money, on just gifts. Because you can't do that. So, did anybody follow up with the Department of Education to see if that is something that we can actually use as an expense? Because if not, we're not, it's going to come out of the city's general fund and not the actual grant.
No, I, I think we're based on the fact that it's, uh, it's like an annual type, uh, special situation.
I've never seen that before, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. No, and like I said, I, no, I didn't check. And so I'm just saying, and we went on, uh, the premise that.
Can you check with them?
Because that's something we do at the police department as well, but I, I can check on that, if that's what you're asking.
Because this is, this is funding that we're not getting reimbursed. Your, your staff at the police department is city staff. This is a grant, uh, not a grant. This is a fund that we get through, a contract we get through the Department of Education and, and with the school, and Sabrina knows this. You cannot just spend money from the Department of Education on, on gifts. You know, if it would have been something for the kids, then, yeah, you can, because it's for the children that you're actually servicing.
Yeah, if, if there are allowable expenses for certain activities, we'll, we'll look into that and get a better idea what the guideline is on that.
And can you bring it to us at the next meeting?
Okay.
On the fifteen. Thank you. Anything else? Well, you have to approve it now. It already made the expense, you know. And maybe what you could do is, uh, do a policy and bring it back to us for a procedural where you can find out with the Department of Education to see what is allowable. And this way, it goes through that process, because once you start allowing them to make all these expenses and it comes out of our general fund, we don't get reimbursed for that. Like the credit card thing.
Yeah.
They're, they're using the credit card for meals and stuff like, that's not going to be.
We can create a policy and a guideline that will parallel what the Department of Education has and implement that. This way, it's, it's, there's more regulation there. But right now, it's just trying to fill that out, but, okay.
Well, the finance director is the one that's supposed to actually review these, uh, charges and, and go over it with them to see if, if it's allowable or not. Well, you can ask him if you want to ask him. I mean, I don't think, who did, who did it go through? It didn't go through anyone, right? That's, that's what you're saying.
It came through me. They, uh, yeah, they asked me if they could use a credit card for this purposes, so.
Okay, I have a question too, please. Uh, I want to ask the finance director. On that time that we did not pay the bills, because Alma did not show up to the meeting, it was almost five hundred dollars. Has that been paid already? They gave me the information, but it's all mixed. I would like it in one sheet. Uh, specifically, excuse me.
That is not on the agenda.
Excuse me, can I finish talking, please?
It's on here, you're going off topic.
We're talking about, about funds, so I'd like to know.
No, it's not on here.
If that went through, if it was approved, because it was almost five hundred dollars. And that's public money that wasn't supposed to be paid out because of Alma's tantrum. Thank you.
So, do what I do. In council comments, that's when you bring up this stuff, because that's not agendized, and that's the proper procedural. Except, out of four years, you still haven't learned that, so it's okay. So is there, what was the item for, um, the, that you wanted to discuss?
So are, are we, are we, Mayor, we're approving one or after?
We could do it all after, since we pulled them all.
Okay.
If only we weren't, we didn't pull them all.
Okay.
Um, number two is the minutes, and I was going back through the minutes, and, um, on one of the minutes on top, it said that it was the lack of quorum. Which it was, and right below that, after that, it states what ended up happening. Dorothy, was that something that you did add it on there? The five members attended before meeting started, but one member announced he was leaving, and two other members followed. There was no meeting held due to lack of quorum. Did you add that? Because.
Can you put your mic on, please?
Yeah, she, she's fine, because in the other one, it doesn't state.
You, you put that because that's what you're, you're supposed to put when you, when you have.
Correct, and on the other one, there's the same thing, and it just says the top part. It doesn't have the bottom part.
Well, no, because, um, there was a lack of quorum, but, but on the other one, it said, I put what happened. And the other one, well, you guys weren't here, just the lack of quorum.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah.
I had a question with that one, Dorothy. So, and I understand, and that's fine, but.
Yeah, I don't have.
Wouldn't you have to have put what happened? Because apparently, we didn't have a meeting, but yet, the mayor spoke for like half an hour when there wasn't a meeting, because it never got open. But that wasn't put on here.
And that's okay, because I was addressing the public.
I'm talking to Dorothy, because.
What was not put on there?
I guess what I said.
The mayor, there was not a quorum, so we did not, they didn't, could not have a meeting.
Correct. Right, and there was no meeting held.
But yet, she spoke for over half an hour.
I addressed the public.
Half an hour, she spoke.
Why not?
Because you did not have a meeting. It was not an open meeting.
No business was conducted.
It needs to be put on there, too.
No business was conducted.
I didn't feel that it was put on, because there was no meeting, and I put, lack of meeting, instead of putting everything that the mayor said. I mean, that, to me, that wasn't part of the meeting. It was.
Addressing the community.
It was just no, there was just lack of quorum.
And, and that would have been fine.
You walked out. You guys refused to attend and walked out. And I addressed the community why we were not having a meeting.
It should have just been lack of quorum.
Because you guys threw a tantrum and walked straight out of here.
Well, I just felt.
But still got paid for attending a meeting that you refused to attend.
Why we had lack of quorum, because that's what happened. But, uh, I did want to put, you know, what the mayor said and all of that, because we didn't have no meeting. It had not anything to do with the meeting.
The city business, yeah.
There was no meeting, it was lack of quorum, and then she, she spoke.
And that was it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's it. That, that should have been, that was it.
Yeah.
And it is.
And that's it. But what Diego's saying is.
Just because I addressed the community doesn't mean anything. It's, I could address the community if I need to, because of, of individuals that refused to be here. So if you guys refuse to be here, then the, the public needs to know that.
Well, see, that's a question that I arose, because she refused to be here, because we wanted to put, you know, it was, we wanted to put something on the agenda, and she walked out and she left the meeting. She got paid, but she recognized us.
Because I didn't attend the, uh.
And even in closed session, you walked out too, while we were.
I didn't attend a closed session, because I said it publicly that I was not going to be part of that. There's nothing, and then we conducted the regular scheduled meeting.
She didn't want to be part of it, but look at, we got an interim attorney. We're doing the right thing.
Okay. All right, so then we can move on.
Just to make it clear, um, what is it that you were posing?
I was just, uh, for me.
No, no.
I was just saying, this shouldn't have been down there. It should have just been, there wasn't a quorum, and that was it. End of story.
But you guys walked out. You were here. It wa, when you're, there's no quorum, it wasn't because you guys didn't show up.
But you never started the meeting.
You guys showed up and walked out.
You never started the meeting.
It doesn't matter. You still showed up. Just because you want to be deceitful to the community, I'm not.
No.
So therefore, we're done, let's move forward, and, so then.
I just felt it, it needed to be said, and, and when, uh, the mayor walked up that other meeting, I didn't think of putting that.
Yeah, um, yeah, but it has to be put, like, I mean, go ahead, Sabrina.
I, I just wanted to say, um, I don't think it should have been put on the min, on, on, on this, like that, only because, um, livestream was opened up, and Mayor, you did explain there what happened, which it's already documented there, and I think it shouldn't have, it shouldn't be on here, because we didn't have a meeting. So, I, I just think.
People still showed up.
No, but, yes.
They showed up and walked out. That is the fact.
But you explained what happened.
That is a record for city records.
It should have been opened up.
Well.
Then I would have said, okay, well, you could put that there.
You think I'm not going to address the community why we are not having a meeting? Of course I'm going to address them.
Yes.
That's part of being transparent.
Yes.
You did not address the community that you didn't pay the bills.
The thing is that you refused to attend, because you threw a tantrum, because our last city attorney was here, when you had not done the process correctly. Now, because you throw a tantrum, and you, and you didn't want to be here, sorry, I'm going to address the community. Just because you want to be deceitful, I'm sorry, I'm not part of.
When you address the community, you need to be truthful.
And I was truthful.
No, you were not.
You walked out.
You were not.
Okay, what did I not think?
You were not truthful, because we didn't have tantrums.
Right. Throwing a, a tantrum is when you walk out. That to me is a tantrum.
It's a tantrum, Janie, is when you, the bills are due and you don't come, and she didn't pay the bills, and we're paying over, almost five hundred dollars of late fees because of Alma's tantrum.
So if you have no more other questions.
Do I need to motion it?
Okay, but we're not going to continue with this.
Dorothy, my thing is.
So do we have a motion to approve, um, the minutes?
No, I want a motion to remove this part of the, of the minutes. Just that part.
I, and I make a, and I am going to give a directive that it needs to stay that, there because of the fact that is exactly what happened. If you guys want to be, again, untruthful and not transparent, so that people don't know that you came into the council chambers, and, and walked out because, no, because it wasn't on. It was not on.
You talked for an hour on livestream.
But when you guys came in, it was not on. The people didn't get to see when you walked in, and then you, we're not going to be here, because he's here, and then you left, and then the other two followed.
You know what, Dorothy, if the mayor's going to have a tantrum over this.
It's going to reflect the fact.
No, Janie, Janie.
I want to see the mayor have a tantrum.
Janie, that's okay, because she had a tantrum and she walked out also. But we had Mike, Michael here.
Tony, if we, if we made a, if we made a motion to take that off, is, can she leave it on there with just a directive, or would that be?
That's what happened.
No, the council needs to approve minutes.
But if that is what happened.
So if she made a motion.
They want us to remove the fact that they left from the meeting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I stopped. So, I, I, I was the one. If she made a motion to take that part off of the agenda.
The minutes.
And, I mean, the minutes, sorry. And so, there should be a second, and if it goes, then that's what would happen, but she's saying that, because she's giving her a directive, that it's going to stay on there, that, so I'm just asking.
So you want her to lie on the minutes. That's what you're asking her to do. You want her to not put what happened, because they were here. This is what happened. They came in, they saw that the last city attorney was here, and they, and he made an announcement, it was not on livestream yet. He made an announcement that he was not going to stay here, and he walked out and the other two left. So that needs to reflect on the minutes, because that is what happened. So to be deceitful and not put the actual, what actually happened? Because it wasn't lack of quorum, because they just didn't show up. They were here. There was quorum. They left, refused to stay.
So the question to me was about the process, the, the motion, the second, and the vote, and you stated things correctly, council member.
So what about what I stated?
So, she, she made a motion, I'll second it.
So what is about, what about what I stated? So that doesn't need to be on there, of why they, we didn't have?
The minutes, there was very little in law about what needs to go in minutes. There's almost nothing in the Brown Act about minutes.
But it has to reflect what happened.
May I continue?
It has to reflect what happened. It has to reflect what happened, right?
Go ahead.
Please let me know when I may continue.
Continue, but it still has to reflect it.
The, the minutes reflect the action taken and the vote of the, of the council. That's all that needs to be in the minutes.
So what about quorum? Because this has nothing to do with votes. There was no vote, no action, there was no quorum.
It shouldn't be on there.
Because that still needs to be on there, as far as that they didn't come, they came in, and they walked out. It's not because of, because when you have lack of quorum, it's because we didn't have anybody show up, correct?
If, a lack of quorum is not a quorum.
But because they didn't show up.
For any reason.
Normally, okay. Quorum is when you're here. When you're not here.
Talking about that.
When you're not here, there's no quorum. Okay, let me finish too now. Okay? So, if there's no quorum, then that needs to stipulate there was no quorum, because we did have quorum. So, it, it needs to reflect when they left, then. Because we put on the minutes, let me just finish. We put on the minutes, when they show up late, we put the time that they show up. That goes on the minutes, and I know this, because like I keep saying, I'm not just on this council, I've been on other boards, and other attorneys tell me that you do do that. So you put that, the time they leave and the time they left. So then what needs to be on there is when they showed up and when they left. Because there was, there was quorum. The thing that I'm saying, there was quorum, the fact what happened was, is that they left. So we ended up with no quorum, because they decided to leave.
Before the meeting started.
So what?
It was three, six-thirty.
It was before the meeting did not get opened.
They left at, what is the time they left?
Six-thirty question.
Six-thirty-one.
The meeting didn't happen.
It was, she just asked, right now, it was six-thirty-one when you.
And it started.
Because you threw your fit and made the announcement that you were going to be here, so how can I start it when you're making that tantrum right there?
What we're explaining, but what we're explaining is that the meeting.
People already know. They're watching on livestream, and they know that you guys did not show up, that you guys walked out, and you still got paid for refusing to attend. So that is on our municipal code, that it says, when you have an excused absence, that's when you get your stipend. When you refuse or unexcused, an unexcused absence, you do not get paid. And you guys refused to stay, so therefore, you shouldn't have gotten paid, but you still got paid. Which doesn't matter, because you guys still are not going to return and reimburse everybody from the city, because that's taxpayers' money.
She had a tantrum, she didn't show up, and we didn't pay the bills, and now we have to pay five, almost five hundred dollar late fee. She points us out, but she doesn't point her point, point, point out.
I have a question.
Oh my gosh.
Look at her. I don't know what's wrong with her. She's threatening me that I'm going to be out of here. Who cares?
Let's, let's move on. So then the motion is there to remove it.
Dorothy, I have another, I have a question. I have a question. I have a question, and maybe, uh.
That's good.
Eileen, maybe you can, you can answer this one for us.
Not worried at all.
Because on the comments here, it says that, that by the Brown Act, there should have been four or five votes on the minute for June the thirteenth. It says it twice. But I looked everywhere, and I've asked, and there's nowhere that I found, unless you do it, that, um, apparently, we were giving, we were given, we were handed a notice, um, notice of the majority rule of the four to five votes. I, I don't remember getting anything, but, uh, Dorothy, did you get?
A notice for four to five votes on what?
A note, a notice of the, of cease and desist.
But it doesn't say cease and desist. It says, it says it's, and we didn't even get the cease and desist. Bertha got it.
No, you did. Now you forgot where you got it at?
Well, that was a different time.
Okay, well, you still got it.
That day, Bertha got it.
You still got it.
But that day, Bertha got it.
You, you still. So let's just move on, make the motion to remove that, so we can move past that already.
But that's just the comments.
Yeah.
My understanding of this entry in the minutes is that it was reflecting a comment made by a member of the public, not, not. My understanding of this entry in the minutes is that it was reflecting a comment made by a member of the public, not, not an official statement by the city that, that there was a, a need for a certain number of votes one way or the other. That's how I'm reading this.
Alright, so then we can move on. So, um, then, go ahead and do it, but at least the public knows what happened. So.
Okay, so Molina, uh, motion, Garza second and who voted?
That's good.
I'm sorry? Voted to take it out. Or what are we doing?
Diego motioned.
I motioned, she second.
Okay, I'm running the meeting here. So Diego motioned. Okay, then. Then you second?
I second.
Okay. Then Janie motioned, Diego second. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, no public comment on that, right?
No. Um, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Mayor?
No.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Yes.
Uh, council member Garza?
Yes.
Council member Molina?
Yes.
And council member Solario?
Yes.
So that's four yes and one no.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Okay, yeah, the soccer.
Yeah, the soccer on item number three. Um, I know on their application, um, they put Heritage Park, which I know before they used to use, uh, Tom Flores that has lights.
Richard Flores.
Or Richard Flores, sorry, Tom Flores.
It's under construction though.
It's, and, and this is the point that I'm getting at, um, it is under construction. So I was wondering if we can relay a message or see where we can fit them in. If we can at Veterans Park because the lights are on there and I know when the time changes, that's what they're requesting. So they usually use the lights at.
Flores Field.
Flores Field. Um, and when the time changes, they're not going to have that now. So I wanted to see if we can accommodate them. Because it's not on here for the Veterans Park, but I know that they need the lights for that time change. So if we can move them to Veterans Park and see how we could fit them in. Because I know the softball's in there too. I know the softball uses it and we have that. Um, but I just want to make sure we, I'm still talking, mayor.
I know. Um, carry on so we can move on.
Well, if you were to not interrupt, I would get my point across. Um, I would really like to accommodate them and getting them where there is lights. Because they are part of our city and they represent our city. So we should accommodate them.
So in a nutshell, what he wants you to do is to reach out to them and if they are interested in the Veterans Park so that they can put in the application for the Veterans Park and that's it. So that's. So, so instead of having to go through all that, just that's the directive. So could you do that? Thank you.
So I have, I have on that one too. Um, I did speak to chief about it because it did come to, to me last year and I had talked to the ex, uh, city manager about it. And the different things that they could, we could possibly do, um, maybe look for a grant or something that can put lights out on that soccer field. So other people can use it too. And not just, you know, the soccer guys, but it's very important because these kids, they, they, that's something that keeps them busy. And the soccer league, they, they're all volunteers. So it's just like all the other, uh, youth groups that we have here. So we were talking about it and it would be good if we could somehow find some kind of funding that would help us put lights out there for them. Maybe Javier or, or chief.
So to that, the grants, there's no grants that actually fund, uh, lights. And another thing is that if we would have received more funding from, if we would have received more funds from Greenbrier that you guys didn't want to do. Then that would have helped with actually funding a lot of the things with the park. Because right now, we don't receive much funds. And that, if we would have received a million, that would have covered a lot of our parks that we could have already re, uh, rehabbed. You know, you could have bought more benches, you could have brought more, um, grills, lights. But we don't have that extra fund and there is no grant that actually funds something like that. So with that, let's just move on and so is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion or not?
I'm motion.
Motion by Sabrina?
And with the modification of, of Veterans Park.
Well, they're going to have to sit waiting out. You just bring it back because they have to fill out the application with that request. So just add on there, bring it back on the fifteenth. Have them fill it out because how about if they don't want to do that? And have them fill it out and then put it on the agenda again so that we can approve that.
So are we approving number three or no?
Yes, we are. Because they, they're still asking for that one. They just need another location.
So are we approving number one and three and two? No, not two, but.
With modifications.
Yeah, modifications.
Yeah.
One and three.
Did you already, okay, uh, talked about the lights? I wanted to make a comment on this.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we already talked about the lights. Okay.
I'm motion.
So motion by Sabrina. Is there a second? Second by Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, yes. Okay, then we have the next item. So we have, uh, regular business and, um, that is. Number five, chief? Or Javier? Javier, number five?
It's, it's actually Jeff. It was just a typo.
Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, mayor, member of city, uh, city council. Uh, we have a pretty simple request here on behalf of, um, Consolidated Mosquito Abatement District. Uh, their intention is to install some solar, uh, topped parking structures on the south end of their site. Uh, and going through the records, it seems that they had done some other site modifications that were not properly approved by the city. Uh, so, um, their project was originally approved in October of twenty sixteen, uh, with a condition that the southern portion of the project area would be surfaced with decomposed granite. Uh, it would, in fact, it was paved, which seems to have been kind of a, a verbal authorization by a former city staff member. Uh, and at this point, they're, like I said, that they're intending to install these, uh, uh, roof mounted solar panels on parking structures, which requires site plan review. So, or killing two birds with one stone, we're going to kind of retroactively authorize the asphalt pavement, uh, and parking lot striping that occurred in twenty seventeen. Uh, as, at the same time as we, um, take care of their site plan review for installation of the, uh, parking structures. Uh, I do want to point out that I am proposing one change to the conditions of approval, uh, in the, the, uh, conditions that are included with the resolution in the agenda packet. I simply made reference to a single site plan sheet, uh, and I've since thought better of that and I'm including the entire, uh, uh, plan check set as, uh, an exhibit to the resolution. Uh, so it would be, uh, that one changed to condition number. When I get there. Uh, changed to condition number three, uh, in the attached resolution. So, um, this is not a public hearing item, so there was no public noticing involved. Uh, however, the public can, uh, speak on the project, uh, as needed and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, and would then request that you adopt resolution twenty twenty four thirty seven approving the site plan modifications.
No questions here. Any questions? Any from the public? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four, twenty thirty six?
Motion.
Diego, uh, Sabrina, then Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to the public hearing and that is, uh, Javier.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, mayor. Um, so it's, this, uh, item number six, uh, is subject to conducting a public hearing for council's intention to confirm the collection of annual assessment for the Parleyer Landscaping Maintenance and Lighting District, number one, by resolution. Uh, we do this every year. It's, it hasn't changed from last year. It's the same taxes that, that are going on each property. Um, the, the maps and all that is, are at the city clerk. So if you can read, if, they're too long to print here, but, um, if anyone needs to see them, they're, they're available. Um, so yeah, it's just, every year we do this. It's a routine and I have to bring it back again one more time, three times before August thirty first.
Okay. Let me do that all the time. So it's, I don't have any questions. Any from the public? Okay, hearing none. Oh, this public hearing is now open. Forget it's a public hearing. Any from the public? Hearing none. So a public hearing is now closed. Um, so do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Diego. Do I have a second? Second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, yes.
Uh, Diego motion?
Diego and then, um, Kathy. Now we have, um, item number seven. And this is for the finance director?
Yes, um, mayor, council and, uh, residents of Parleyer. I, I'm going to request that we table this because we want to bring it back. The contracts with the partners for the BSCC grant are being finalized by our, uh, legal counsel. So we want to make sure the city's protected and there's liability provisions in there. So once we get that detailed, we'll bring it back.
We'll bring it for the, the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So then we move on to item number eight.
So what are we doing? Table?
Eight, tabling it for, um, the fif- uh, we're not tabling it. We're, it's moving, coming back on the, on the fifteenth. So we're bringing it back on the eight fifteen. So, okay, the presentation is from Javier for the improvements, Avila Sewer improvements. Yeah, and it's construction.
Yeah, the, the project was completed and inspected. Um, uh, but I want, I, I think I'm going to table this because we found something else, um, that we want to fix. So just I'll bring it back.
August fifteenth?
Yes, August fifteenth.
So that one's coming back on August fifteenth as well. Okay, so we have, uh, item number nine. And that one is.
Transportation.
Who's presenting it and doesn't say?
I believe that's, that's me too.
Okay.
Um, so this one's actually from, from Fresno Cog. Uh, they created a, uh, active transportation plan for the region. And, uh, they've listed a, a group list of projects, which includes all the projects we've already identified ourselves in Parleyer. Um, it's just, they put it into their plan so that, that we can look for funding in the future. They can help us look for funding. So it, it's part of their regional active transportation plan. Um, and they want us to, um, essentially adopt the resolution, adopting the Fresno County Regional Active Transportation Plan. Staff recommends, uh, the city council to adopt it, authorizing the adoption of the city, or the, of the Fresno County Regional Active Transportation Plan.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any from the public?
Again, my name is Raoul. On that there, does, will any money come out of the city of Parleyer for that service?
It's a council of governments fund that comes from Fresno County. It comes to us. It doesn't go from here to there.
So nothing, nothing from us?
That's not how that works.
And what is it that they're going to be doing?
It's just a plan that, that looks like, uh, active transportation in Fresno County and how the cities kind of have their active transportation projects. So we give them a list of what we're working on and what we're looking funding for. And they, uh, just put it into a master list that, uh, regionally that they look at.
Does the city of Parleyer have anything going on right now in, in those respects?
Yeah, we have a lot of projects coming. Um, we have, um, we're working on our tactile, tactile urbanism, uh, study and, which is identifying, um, intersections that we're trying to fix in the future. There's a list of them. But also we have a safe house school project coming next year. It's six million dollars. We got through active transportation. Uh, planning grant. So it's a construction grant for, for, uh, for making Madison, Parleyer, a bunch of streets around town safer. And we have a bu- a lot of others to, uh, projects in there as well.
Council member Garza, is that what you're using for that intersection on?
No.
On Smyrna?
I don't think so.
No?
Smyr- uh, is that, is that Madison?
Can I go in depth where we get those funds from?
In front of Martinez.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
The funds from the Fresno Council of Government come from Measure C funds. So that's why it's also important to pass Measure C, uh, which will be on the ballot on twenty sixth. So that is where it comes, it goes to Fresno Council of Governments, which I'm the chair there. And, um, they go in process and put out applications, like, uh, Javier's always putting applications for funding. For, because it's a competitive thing still. You still have to compete with the other cities to, to get approved and it goes by a point system. And if we make it, which Javier has been very successful in getting a lot of funding for us. Um, this last one that we just got, I think, um, he, uh, Robert, uh, fibs told me that you, you, uh, the city of Parleyer ranked the highest from all the other cities, even from Fresno. So that goes to show you that we have a great engineer here that's working on every way that we, he can get funding for the city of Parleyer. And that's where all our tax money that is throughout Fresno County for roads and construction, infrastructure goes to the Fresno Council of Governments. That is where the money is at. Then they, then they put the money to the cities that, like this last Measure C, we were supposed to, and I keep saying, we were supposed to receive two point five million a year, which will help fix a lot of our problems in the city. We currently only get five hundred thousand a year. You have to wait several years to do one little stretch, uh, of, of a project. So if you're going to do around here and, and the front of, of city hall, you have to wait three years just to try to get that done. So with that measure, it would have helped us receive two point five. You would have been able to get one project done and then the next year you work on a different project and then a different project and you would have had everything done and that needed to be done in the city. That is why everything takes so much time because we don't generate that revenue. And that, that's why it's important for Measure C to pass in twenty twenty six, which is an existing tax that has been existent since nineteen eighty six. So it's been there for, since eighty six. We passed that back in eighty six and it was revised in two thousand and six. Now it's coming back again before its sun sets in twenty and twenty six. So that is why it's important to pass that. Um.
I got a question. Does this have anything to do with these bus stops that we have here?
Uh, no, not really.
No?
No, it's more of like pedestrians and bikes. Um, yeah, that's a different one. That would be more like transit, uh, plan.
Yeah. That's a Fresno council, uh, uh, that's a Fresno, um, county authority. Um, yeah, and I'm also the chair on that one. But anyways, let's move on. Um, so do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Diego and second by Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, so, uh, council communications, which will start with acting city manager, Serta?
Um, yeah, uh, once again, I want to thank, uh, the council, the mayor and everybody for, uh, helping us move forward and progressively, uh, work towards vitality and, uh, streamlining, uh, uh, city business and handling city business. And I, you know, there was a request, um, not long ago for a, a Manning Corridor plaque. And I'm looking to move forward on that with all the names of the previous council and the current council, just to show recognition and, and show what, uh, what they've done for the community and, and they've done much more, but, uh, it's, it's a start. So I want to thank everybody.
I thought, um, they already had like, we were just waiting for, we already have that plaque, don't we?
No, no, it was, it's, there was a request and so we, there hasn't been, uh, any steps to move forward on that. So, and, and, that was the one for Heritage. We had, we do have the one for Heritage, but the one for Manning Corridor is, is the next one that, uh, we're going to move forward with. So we just want to share that with the community and, and council. So thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight again. Um, staff, you guys are doing a good job. I know it's been hard this last couple of months, but I think we're going to get to it. I think we're going to get to it. Javier, thank you for all the stuff that you're doing for all, I know there's a lot of work uptown now with both things going on. We tried to pass by there. We're like, oh, okay, wait a minute, there's no more road here. But, uh, hopefully, do you have kind of like a time when that's going to be done? Because I know that's a big question that's being asked.
The flooding project, uh, yeah, it's got around six more months of work. Yeah, it's a big project. It's going to go all the way down. South side of town, K Street, all the way down to Sunwes.
And what about the, the?
The facade.
The hole?
The, the.
Flores.
That's that one, the flooding project. Mm-hmm. The, the big excavation. We got, uh, five foot diameter pipelines out there. I mean, that's a huge problem.
I can't wait to see that one. I think this will be great. But thank you all for all your hard work. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say thank you to staff. Um, there's been a lot of things going on in town. Um, a lot of comments being made about our roadways, our, the potholes. A lot of it was not po- natural potholes. There were po- there were potholes from, um, some construction and stuff that they were digging into the, into the gra- uh, roadway. Um, I do have two that I saw yesterday. They're still not, um, covered. Um, some water leaks on I Street and Zoma. Um, there's still barricades there. There's a probably about a three inch, four inch, um, hole still that hasn't been filled. Um, I just have a lot of people, um, calling me about that one. Um, and I did see it for myself. Um, but again, Public Works, uh, thanks to the guys who went out there and fixed those. When I came back into town, I ran over and I'm like, okay, I need to, I need to send the chief a text, but, um, thank you Kathy for getting a hold of, um, Public Works with chief. Um, another thing too I wanted to bring up is, uh, I noticed, um, with the ballot for this coming election, the treasure, treasure position is still on there. Um, I thought we took care of that with council. I thought we took care of that with council approving to take that off with guidance from our previous, uh...
The resolution was never turned in.
And, and again, well, whatever it was, we...
It was never turned in.
We should have had it, um... I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done. It, it, the process was delayed and now we're already a few months away. And again, we will be paying taxpayer money for a position that there is no, nothing there for them. No offense to the current person there. But again, this is something that was brought up and talked about, and we did approve to have it removed. And it was the guidance and lack of getting things completed. But again, it, it's just unfortunate that that's still on there. Because again, that's a stipend. And I'm, I'm assuming it's also insurance being offered.
I don't think, does anybody else get insurance?
No, I'm just saying of, as the elected person.
We don't do that. Only the school board, I think, offers both.
I, well, we, we got offered insurance.
Oh, I don't get...
Well, we got offered, but we waived, yeah, we have to, we...
Okay.
Not that I, we've, I've taken it. But again, that's just something I wanted to bring up and a little disappointed in that. But again, my, our staff at the city, thank you for all your hard work. Javier, I mean, projects are up and down from Zedeker all the way down to Academy. It's really nice to see. And all this cog money that's coming in. Yeah, the sidewalks, the trails, all that stuff, the school safety, you know, home-to-school stuff, that's coming up. And that's, and yeah, Safe Roads to Schools, thank you. Public Works out there putting, you know, painting the, the lines and for school starting in the next couple of weeks. It's nice to see all that coming, coming together. Mind-blowing is, yes, that big hole down the street for me. And questioned, so the block, the, the street on Parlier, Fresno, Fresno, it's going to be cut off at Newmark, correct? To I, I mean, to J Street?
Yeah, correct. Notices have been sent out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Due to the large excavation that we have to do there, it's very dangerous.
Yeah, because it's right there at the K Street. And there's no way for them to get out. And, I mean, they could get in, but there's no way for them to flip, flip it right there to get out. Because that's, I was like, okay, they're going to cut, knock that off. And especially because school's starting. So thank you to, please be careful driving down to Larry Street. That is going to affect my, my street, my, my house right there. But again, I want to be, make, let the public know to be mindful of all this stuff coming up and just to be careful driving through there, especially when school's starting. Thank you.
Excuse me. So I just have a few things. I just want to say thank you to staff, Jeff, Javier. You guys are doing a fantastic job. I really appreciate you guys. Same thing with Public Works. I also saw those holes that were cut out. And they were pretty cut out everywhere. I give props to Public Works. I know they don't have their big water machine that helped them dig out everything before. I know it's under construction or there's a reason why it's not being used. They're having to do it by hand. So to the residents, I apologize that it's taking a little bit longer and that they're not being, being able to fix the, the water leaks real fast. But it is hot out there and they are having to dig it by hand. So I just want to give Public Works props for that. Again, I just want to, the same thing that Sabrina said about the treasure position. It's unfortunate because we did discuss it up here and nothing was taking action after that with our last city attorney, which also brings up, I get the questions about the sports park. And I just want to let you guys know.
I have an update.
We are still delayed on this because we still haven't got the deed under our name. You can have an update. You could tell them after I'm done. We did pay the fifty thousand to get it under our name. And it still hasn't, and that was probably six months ago. And it's still not under our name, so that's why it's getting delayed. I just want to inform you guys, to the people in my district, because they're the ones who keep asking me, so. Other than that, again, like I said, thank you, everyone who's here. Thank you, Bertha, for everything you do and getting us the information that we need. Chief, thank you for the hard work that you've been doing. We wouldn't be where we're at without you right now. Thank you.
Yep, that's true.
I, I want to ask a question. Why isn't the truck working for the water leaks? Is it broken down or what's going on, chief? Do you know anything about that? Because we've used that for years and years and years.
Currently, it's, it's in the shop for repairs. But there are other training issues that we're looking into to make sure that the liability on the city is...
Like what's that, chief? Can you explain it?
Any liability regarding operating large machinery requires certain certifications and licensing. So we want to, we want to ensure that even though that's something in the past that I believe was an oversight, it's something we identified that is, it does bring liability upon the city. So we're going to, we already implemented plans to overcome that. And in the short time, we should, we should be able to have that vector truck available and expedite all of the...
My next question, okay, I'm sorry. My next question is, how long has that, that truck had been used in the city? How, for how long about, if you can estimate it?
I don't know when they got it. All I know is that when I got here, they've had it for several years. I think Bertha would have been right.
Five, four, ten years?
Maybe five?
Five years. And now we're having an issue of the license, the class license to drive it? After that many years, it came into a problem?
Because the person that used to have...
Excuse me, I'm talking. Excuse me, excuse me, I'm talking. I'm not done yet, excuse me.
So it was because of that.
Excuse me. Well, that's kind of interesting that now it's being looked at after so many years being operated without a certified driver. I kind of see it like it's like harassing an employee or, or something because all of a sudden this came up after so long? Doesn't make sense at all now.
Come to our attention as the administrators, we have to do something now that we know about it.
I understand that.
Thank you for taking care of that.
I truly understand that. But what a coincidence, after so many years, now they're asking for a Class A license.
I'll explain it.
Uh, anyway, so that's, that's something to think about. That's not good. And yes, Alma shut me down because a council comment. And now I want to say, because I was asked how much money did the city have to pay for the late charges when Alma refused to have a meeting when she had a tantrum, actually did, and didn't show up to the meeting? And we didn't pay our bills. So what I understand, our bills came up, late fees came up almost to five hundred dollars. Now that's, and they're worried about Happy Meals, six hundred dollars that helped the community. But a tantrum that cost the taxpayers that much money? That's something to think about right there, honestly. And I like to be transparent and truthful on what's going on here. And as soon as I get the paperwork right, I'll put it up. And I'm sorry, Alma, I'm not your yes ma'am. And I'll never be your yes ma'am unless I know it's for the right reasons. But other than that, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
So Dorothy, do you have anything? Michelle? Thank you. Finally.
So today, I pulled six dogs from the city pound, got them spayed and neutered in Fresno at no cost to the city. And this Saturday, I'll be transporting them to Clovis and they'll be on their way to Oregon. Also, this Saturday, I'll be pulling two large breeds from the homeless encampment. They'll be getting spayed at no cost to the city. August of twenty-fourth, the City of Parlier Dog Pound will be partaking in the super adoption event at the Valley Animal Center. And next week, I'll be picking up a couple of pallets of food from Walmart and I'll be distributing it around the park.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for always looking out for the best interest of the community. So thank you again, Michelle.
Okay.
Javier?
Yeah, I'll just touch briefly, because we do have a lot of projects going on. But I'll just touch briefly on the Apahu situation. I know Councilman Sorio and other council members and city manager brought it up. But Mulberry Lane from Milton through, through Mendocino, through Tuolumne, that the reason there's some, some patches there is because we just installed our interconnect water line from our well two A to our well four A for a TCP project. So that whole corridor is going to have some patchwork. And we're going to come back and repave the whole corridor once everything's been tested, turned on, and the water's filtered. So just be patient with us as we try to get this project going and to be completed before the end of the year for the TCP project. It's really important for us to do that. And, and so there will be a little bit of inconveniences as, as we get that, that project going. The other project is the flooding project. That's going to stop the flooding on the southeast side of town. That's a big hole in downtown and there are huge pipes. That, all along K Street, you're going to see also potholes. What, what those are is the contractors going ahead of time before he puts in the pipe all the way down K Street. And he digs up the existing utilities so that he knows ahead of time if we're going to hit it or if it's going to be in the way so that we can change our alignment of our pipe before we get to the, let's say there's a sewer line that's here and you're, you're going to hit it. You plan from way back here and you change your alignment to miss it. And once you get down it. So that's what that potholing is. They have to dig those holes and, and search for those utilities. And as we dig our trench, we're going to dig out all those potholes. It's going to be a new trench for the pipe. And, and we're going to come back and repave everything once we're all done. So, yeah, just be patient with us. We're going to, we're trying to do a lot. And, and as we get this thing going, we'll, we'll, we'll have a good product by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that right now, the Community Development Department is using some LEAP funding to do some amendments, focused amendments to the city's general plan that will include some minor land use changes and possibly reducing the city's sphere of influence at the discretion of the council. At the August fifteenth meeting, we'll be doing a presentation on the proposed changes so the council and the public can see what's upcoming. And we'll be highlighting information about the benefits to the city of reducing this, potentially reducing the sphere of influence, which will kind of hopefully drive development towards the city's core, prevent us from having sprawling infrastructure and development, and a couple of other things. So that's all I have.
Mayor, can I say something to you really quick? I just wanted to let you guys know that we are scheduling a AB twelve thirty-four, which is mandatory for all the council members to take for the next meeting, August fifteenth.
Are we going to have that at the LEAP? Aren't they having that out there, too? Because we're paying for that trip, so... So then, the ones that should attend, maybe it's the ones that are not going. Because, I mean, it's going to cost us...
It's going to, I mean, if we have two or three, it's the same thing.
It's going to cost us, right?
So I'm just letting you guys know it'll be next, um, August fifteenth. And the budget will also be presented to the council August fifteenth.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. This will be for our finance director. The tax rolls, have we done anything with the tax rolls for us to ensure that we receive funding from the, the tax for the assessor's office? Because there's liens that are there. And when you submit a tax roll, it has to be going before the council and we do a public hearing. And it's due by August ninth. So do we have anything that, which I don't think we're going to have any time to put a public notice for the public to know ten days before, for this public hearing? So I want to know if there was anything that was done or why it was not done.
I would have to say that we have been reviewing all the revenues that were supposed to come in. And I'm not really sure how much you're talking about.
No, it's not, it's not revenue that's coming in. This is, goes to the, the tax assessor's office. So, you know, property taxes. So you have to do a public hearing and submit a resolution to them so that we can get the funds that when they have liens on property, that assessor's office can forward those funds to the City of Parlier. So we're past the timeline to be able to do this because you were supposed to have a public hearing. And we never did a public hearing. And it's due by August ninth, so we're not going to meet that deadline. And I would suggest that you contact the assessor's office to see what we can do to get this resolved because that's funding that will come to the city that we will not see if we don't do this process. That's one. So you already said, Bertha, that the city budget is going to be done?
It will not be done, it will be presented to you.
So you mean a workshop? Okay, that goes to my next question. So why haven't we done a continued resolution to roll over the same existing budget? Because now we're not in compliance with the state requirements. And all those grants that we're actually looking into getting funding, that is part of the requirements for the state. You have to have a budget approved or a continued resolution for that to, to be able to be in compliance with the state. So we haven't done that since June thirtieth, it was due. And we still have not even done a continued resolution. So why have we not done that?
So we'll, Mayor, to answer your question, yes, we can present that at the next council meeting. But because we were, we were close and there was a tentative plan to have the budget for this meeting. But, you know, we want to make sure it's done right and it's thorough because we're so close to having that budget approved. I felt we could hold off on that until we get that approved. So, but, but if, if that's, if that's the case, then at the next council meeting, I'll have, we will have that presented for a resolution.
Let me, let me just explain to you, even the federal government. And you were there when we talked to Jim Costa, when they said, he said the federal government had to do a continuous resolution because they didn't have a budget, right?
Correct.
So the reason you do a continuous resolution is because you have to approve at least existing budget to carry over for the next fiscal year because you cannot conduct business, city governmental business, without a approved budget. So even though you were working on the budget, you still should have done a continued resolution and then brought the budget forward once you completed it and approved the existing budget that you worked on. And that way, it covers the city. Right now, we're not in compliance. We're in August, it was August first. And that should have been a continued resolution, it should have been done before June thirtieth. And that was never done. So that's where my concern is that, do we have people that are working that understand what are the requirements and the laws that are placed in, in, that are placed for cities to follow? Because no one even talked about a, a continued resolution. We have staff that is there in finance that have been there for a long time. And none, nothing came to us for us to approve a continued resolution. You cannot conduct city business that way. That puts the city in risk. All these grants that you're talking about, that's great. But they can, they can, because we're not in compliance. You have to have your audits done. You have to have your budgets done. And we don't have either one.
And, and we have been in communication...
The only time that we had it done was when we had the last finance director. She presented the budget in March. I think it was in March when she was, she had first gotten hired. We don't even have a continued resolution.
Right.
And that is very disappointing that we have staff that we pay pretty much to do a job. We hired four people to work on the budget, never did anything. They kept telling us, we're going to present, we're going to present, we're going to present. Okay, here we are, August first, nothing. So that's one.
I'll just...
But just bring it for a continued resolution for the next meeting. So that way, it can get at least done.
I just do want to share that we have been in communication with the state and federal for all the grants to advise them where we are, just to give them an update. And I, and I know it's, it's not sufficient, but we're not...
You still have to follow through with the law. If the, if, if Jim Costa just told us that they had to do a continued resolution, why would the city have, the City of Parlier not have that obligation?
Right, no, I'm, I'm not objecting to that at all.
So that's, just put it for the next meeting for us to have that continued resolution. And the next, so that's done with that. And the water leaks. So I did bring to your attention as far as the complaints that I got on social media that it takes too long, it's like three or four days or whatever. And my understanding is that they're not, the staff is not doing urgent requests. And I explained it, that you can do an urgent request to the PG&E for utilities so that you can have it USA. Is that being done now?
Yes, so I'm being told that the ones that are determined to be urgent, based on experience and observation, they are being requested for an urgent response.
There's water that's been, this is what I got from this community. There's water that's been leaking for days. And we're tough on our residents with water usage. But the city gets to, you know, like, it's okay. usage, but the city gets to, you know, like, it's okay. This is why that is urgent. Anytime there's water that's still running, you do it as a, as an urgent request because they will show up that day or in the next morning, but they'll take care of it as soon as possible because it's an urgent matter. So that's one for the water leaks. The other, the other thing is, is that I did ask for overtime that was paid out, eighty hours, twenty-nine hours of overtime in a two-week period. So my thing is, how is it humanly possible to work eighty hours plus twenty-nine hours of overtime in two weeks? Now, I asked for, you can submit it to all of us, a backup, like, what did they do? Because that was an extremely expensive payroll check for the city of Parler, five thousand in just a two-week period. That is a lot. So to me, I want to see what was being worked on? What was the urgency for it not to wait for the next working day? Because it's, when you have a department, you always have to be mindful of what, okay, is this thing needs to be done now? Or can we just wait for the next day on a workday and have that conduct, do that project? So that is how it's always been eliminated to have all this overtime. So I have not received anything about that. And that's what I just said, yes, everybody. So that, that is my request that I asked, that you submit that to all of us so that at least we, we have that. And I asked for it for about several weeks ago. And then I, anyway, I don't care. We're watching overtime. So whoever did overtime, if you're, I don't work here, so it's like, I don't have nothing to worry about.
You do.
So I need probably to work here because I'm the only one that's actually doing the job here to getting these things, issues on, uh, being addressed because otherwise they're not being addressed. So now we have the credit card use. So I brought to you, to your attention several months ago to do an investigation on the misappropriation of the credit card, the city credit card. I asked you and you never followed through because I'm fully aware that the, that the use of the credit card has been used for personal purposes. And it's been a two-year span like that. I asked you to do that and you didn't follow through. I ask you to look into the fact that equipment has been missing at the Public Works Department. Didn't follow through with that. Just told Berta not the, not too long ago, maybe a few weeks ago, that our cart, our, the golf cart is missing. We had four golf carts. Three are there and one's missing. When you have equipment for the city, you cannot sell it, you have to do a surplus. We talked about it, right, Berta? Have to do a surplus. Can't just sell it. Right, you know, outright. You can't do that. And then, and then you, I'm, I'm, stop laughing, please. I'm trying to get my point across. So, and then, it is a grant, okay? We have a grant with those carts. So those carts cannot be sold because they belong to the city because they were purchased under a grant. That's the other thing. So those are the two items that I asked you to have an investigation done and again, and equipment from the city, Public, Public Works that has been missing. I know that it's been missing. I've been telling even the last city manager to address it, but then that's when she was put on administrative leave and I asked you back in maybe March, I think it was March or so, also, nothing. So I'm asking you again to conduct an investigation. An investigation that you can contact the sheriff's department for them to do a thorough investigation. And that way, that way, it does not put our, our, our police department in a, in a situation that they feel like, you know, it, because it could become political or not. So I want it be outside with the sheriff's department to conduct that investigation because as far as I can see, the credit card is still being used for personal business, but for personal use, I'm sorry. So that needs to be addressed. That's just to be transparent. That's the reason why I put the credit card statements on the agenda for the public to see, so that they can see what's happening. That's the other thing. Now, I asked months ago, and I believe she showed up here and I asked, she did a presentation about the Academy of Excellence. I did it and I mentioned it then, that I wanted the sign-in sheets. I wanted to have everything that they submit to the Department of Education as monthly, quarterly, and annually. Still have not received anything. Because she stated that she had forty kids, now fifty kids, but then she only purchased meals for twenty-one kids. So to me, that's questionable. And then she said that, oh, well, half of them were gone. So half of the students were gone. So I need to know what's going on and what is being reported because if it's not matching, then the city is the one that's in jeopardy to losing a contract with the Department of Education. So that's what I asked for and I still did not receive it. Months later, I did not receive it.
We sure have a dictator.
And then I wanted to, I, we already talked about this type in, and the flow chart. I have asked, Jeff, I have asked you to do a flow chart because there is concerns about the process on when they come in to get permits. And we talked about it, that there's some, some stuff that is actually outsourced, so it goes to other agencies, that it needs to go through that process. And my thing is, is that, that flow chart needs to be with the person that comes in and gets a permit so that they understand what the process is and what the turnaround time is, so that they know instead of speculating that everything is being done here and we're just not doing it. That's one. The other thing is that I think Will Dan is the other one. So what can we do to change that process? Because everything is being taken to them, but yet they're not available when they, when it's been taken to them, they're not, they're not accessible. So can they come and pick up the documents? Or how can we get them to them as soon as possible? Because that's the problem too.
That's a problem with outsourcing, especially things that involve physical movement of files from one place to another, is the, and I'm not saying it can't work this way, but usually we collect a bundle of building permit applications and those are taken to Will Dan sometime early, in sometime early in the week. Will Dan then returns them to my office the following Monday and I bring them back here when I come in on Tuesday morning. That, that may not be the most efficient way to do it from getting everything done very quickly, but it reduces the number of trips people are making. And again, I'm not saying it has to stay this way. We can, we're, part of what I'm working on in the background is examining in an attempt to enhance the efficiency of how all of this stuff works. There are numerous ways that it can be done. Other cities around here similarly outsource, building plan checking, building inspections, what have you. With, it's a trade-off, I guess, is what I would say. But but yeah, we can certainly examine how that works and if we need to make extra trips or if we need, we, I mean, optimally, we move as much of it as we can to electronic format. That way, we're not moving physical building folders and applications and related materials back and forth physically, but rather just electronically, so.
Okay. Mayor, next week, August seventh, I have a webinar. It's Cloud Permit. They do permit processing and they're going to show us how they do it and if it's something that we were interested in. I'm sending Jeff the invitation. I've sent it to our staff already. We'll look at it and if it's something that.
I, I don't think the problem really lies on the permit part. It's the outsourced part where it's, the turnaround time is not, it's not efficient.
Well, I'm not sure if this covers that. So maybe they have a way so that we wouldn't have to take it to.
Electronically might be a, maybe contacting Will Dan if that's, if we could do it electronically or something because they go and they're not accessible. So it just wastes a trip out there and not being able to turn in what they need to turn in and then come back and try it again another day.
Sure, understood.
So now, I had talked to chief about the property for Academy and, and South, which is the reason, again, it goes back to why it's not being recorded as city property. And I spoke to Paul Dictos, which he's the assessor, he's the one that's elected to do the assessor agency. So I asked him to look and inquire as to why we are having trouble getting that recorded. The problem lies, and I had that discussion with you today about, there's property tax that is owed that the owner never paid. So now the question is, does the city pay for it or do we wait for him to pay for it? Because they're not going to record something without not making, without it not being paid. The other problem was, is that this person that was, purchased that property did not, was not active with the attorney general's, uh, agent, the attorney general. So they had to work on paying that tax so that they, they can be active again. So then that way he can come into the assessor's agency and get it recorded and pay the taxes as well. So now it's just about having that communication with the actual property owner, which I'm going to tell you that Neil Costanzo did contact him and he's going to record it. He's going to sign the deed and he's going, not to sign the deed, but he's going to go to the assessor's agency. So he did track him down and he did get it done. So we should have that transferred over to us shortly because he did also contact the title company that was working with that. So that is why we're having to deal with this problem because again, the responsibility lies on staff to make sure that this stuff get done. I, my luck is that when I run into people, I inquire about what's going on. So I asked, I ran into Paul Dictos on an event, a Rotary event actually in Fresno, and I asked him, I'm having this problem, can you please look into it? As soon as he left that meeting, called his, his staff, connected me with his staff and told me what the problems were. So it's just about picking up the phone, contacting the people that you need to do to contact so that you can find out what's going on. So that is, shouldn't be my job, but eventually I'm the one that always has to do with these things. The other thing that I also want to bring in, I also brought it to your attention sort of, was the water rate. And we talked about it and I think I even spoke to the finance director as far as the twelve percent that was increased when we did the increase, it's not a twelve percent. It's a twenty-four percent. Because there, the way he presented it to us was a twelve percent, only the person that did the study. But what's in the document doesn't reflect what he presented us. He presented us a twelve percent increase on the volumetric rate. But he also did a twelve percent on the service fee. And it's worded monthly flat rate fee, which does not say service fee. So when I looked into it and I actually got the report, it was intentionally done for the purposes of, it was a water rate study, Kathy. Neil doesn't do the water rate studies. Four years and he still don't know. So, you know, when he did the study, he specified in the study that it was to generate funds for our TCP project, which is our filtration system because at that time, we only had the, the settlement. We did not have the funding from the state water board, which, that is why we did that. So my, what I'm going to, to make sure that we bring it back for August fifteenth and take out the twelve percent on the service fee because I read A, Assembly Bill twenty-five seventy-two, which I've been stating because I, I read it since, I, before I even ran for office, I, I, I had researched it because that's when we were having the issues with the water rates being extremely high too. It say, it states on the, on the SB, on the Assembly Bill, and they did an amendment on there and it states that it only can be a volumetric, volumetric rate increase or rate, it's only, only done by volume, not service fee. It does not say anything about the service fee. So we cannot do that. So what we need to do is take out the twelve percent that is on that because from what I've seen, it's ridiculously crazy on what the rate is. And I think I have it right here.
I think you need to explain to the community, why did you unveil all that? And we didn't even own it or anything before election. You misled the community.
No, I'm bringing it to light because it caught my eye. So you don't look at anything else, so I'm sorry, but that's my duty. I do what I need to do. If you don't do it, I don't have to tell you how to do it.
Unveil parks and water filters that we don't have?
Can you stop? It's my time. You had your opportunity. That is it. So it's on here where you have the fixed monthly charge, it's sixteen dollars. Then it was going to increase for twelve percent, seventeen ninety-two. Then the next year, twenty oh seven, the following year, twenty, twenty-two forty-eight, the, and then twenty-five eighteen. Then it tops out in October of twenty twenty-five because that was where it was supposed to top out. It was twenty-eight twenty. So you have all the meter sizes and on the last meter, and this is where I'm like, oh my God, we have an eight-inch meter, which I, I, I must, I'm positive it has to be with, of course, like apartment complex because they are going to use those big industrial meters for industrial or apartments. But their service fee is going to, is, is actually, once it's topped out next year in October, it will be a thousand eight hundred and eighty, when our service fee was only sixteen dollars. And I know there's a breakdown by sizes. So you have like the single-family unit, it will top out at twenty-eight twenty. Then you have the one-point-five meter, thirty-five. Then you have the two-inch to two-point-five, seventy dollars. That is a large amount to actually charge as a service fee. Because when you do a Prop two eighteen study, it is to justify the increase that it's costing us to deliver or to deliver the service that we're delivering. A fee for service fee or administrative fee does not fall under that because you have the same statement that goes out all the time. The only thing that we can increase it on a Prop two eighteen is the actual water that is being delivered to the residents. And the reason that was done as well for that increase was because Sigma increased our rate from one ninety-five to three ninety-five. So that is what needs to happen is that only the volumetric rate should have been done, not the service fee. So this is why a lot of the residents were complaining and coming here complaining about the fee or what they're being billed because it's extremely high. So at the next meeting, it needs to be on the agenda for us to remove that fee.
I'll share that I have been in contact with Dan Bergman and I did ask him to reevaluate that. His response to that was, he has to do another analysis to come back with, with the ability to remove that because it was a resolution. So I can ask legal counsel if that, those water rates were approved and there's a resolution in order to eliminate the administrative fee on that? Is there a resolution? Do we have to do another resolution or can we amend that resolution? That's.
You can amend it because it's not a legal rate. It's not legal. That's what I've been saying. It's not a legal fee that we can actually charge. Now, if you want to go ahead and continue, I did my best to bring it to the, back to the council so that we can rectify that, but if you're not wanting to do that, then that's your recommendation.
No, I have no, I have no objection because it sounds reasonable. I'm just saying, we want to do it proper and, and legally. So I would confer.
This is not a legal, it's not legal.
I would, I would confer with legal counsel for their direction on that because I don't, I don't know that. That's not.
I'm telling you, read Assembly Bill twenty-five seventy-two.
I would ask.
And that is the government code.
Can I just suggest that we bring it back and actually if we can bring it back in closed session because there's a comment that I'd like to make that was made in closed session regarding this and I cannot say it in public session. So if we can bring that back, that topic in closed session, that, that's.
I think it needs to, we need to fix it. Whether the comment was made or not made, it doesn't matter about. Whether the comment was made or not made, it doesn't matter about the comment. It matters that, that, it doesn't matter about the comment because this is something that was changed back in '21, okay? I'm not talking about, let's do another fee on, because then you will have to have a study. That is the process of a Prop 218. But you're not adding on, you're taking away. So it doesn't require a Prop 218. Because a Prop 218 study is because you're increasing the fee, not to remove it. So the thing that I have a problem with is because it was not presented that way at the meeting. My understanding was from back then, when he presented, it was a 12% increase. And I even sent you the article, well, the, the coverage that we had from the media where we talked about it and we told them it was a 12% every year. But then the other part where it says a monthly rate fee, that's where the deception came in. Because it should have said service fee. And then we would have caught that and said, wait a minute, are you charging a 20, 12% increase every year for a service fee? Because we can't do that. It's not costing us more to send out the same bill that we've been sending out.
And again, there's a comment that, that was made and I'd like to discuss that in closed session.
So what we can do is put it on the agenda for approval. And you can discuss it in, in closed session, but at the end of the day, it still needs to happen. So we could put it on the agenda for us to approve that change. And you can still make that comment. Because at the end of the day, it's still not going to change that we still have to change that.
Correct. It needs to be fixed if it needs to get fixed.
I don't have any objection at all to the request. I'm just simply telling you that I'm trying to go through legal counsel so we can do it properly and we'll put it on the agenda.
Follow the Prop 218 and that, if you, if you look it up and it tells you why a Prop 218 is required. It's not for removing.
You gotta quantify increasing fees, absolutely.
And that's what Dan does.
Legal counsel to make sure it's all in order. That's all. Make sure we're done right. And I'll bring it back.
Then you need to, get familiar with the, with the laws then. I'm sorry. Because obviously, it doesn't take an attorney to read, and when it states on there that it has to be volumetric.
I get it. I get it. It doesn't hurt though to have legal counsel look at it.
If you want to pay for somebody to do another study just to remove it, that does not make any sense, Serta. Does not make any sense. Because it's to remove it. It's not to add on. And when you need studies, it's to justify why you're increasing it, not why you're removing it. You don't need justification to remove an extra fee that should have never been there, especially the way it was done.
That will be generated based on the, the percentage that was calculated. So the study would just give you a new calculation. So it, and I understand what you're saying.
It goes back to what, it's my floor. I know what, it doesn't matter. It's the floor where I, I, you guys already spoken, you're still talking. But it's my floor. I'm sorry. It's my floor. You can stop, please, okay? I know it's hard, but please. So the thing, the thing is that.
That's why she goes last because she doesn't stop.
This is what I was saying, is that when you're doing a study, so we're going to go and, and pay for a study again when it's not necessary. Because again, the reason why we did the first study was to generate the revenue that we needed to be able to put the filtration system. We don't need that anymore because we received the funding for it. So why are you going to still continue with that? With that, making sure that we get more when, Serta, you don't live here, okay? And, and this is, so it affects residents. And just look at it as if you lived here. Would you want, would you want to pay something that's not necessary? You would want to be what it's fair, correct?
I'm not objecting to it at all.
Then that's what I'm asking is to not be objective to it. Because, because you're stating that we still do another study and pay for another study so that, so that way we still get another, the, get more or, or generate more. Because the 12% that is already there shouldn't be changed. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is that the service fee does not need to be there. You could have left it at $16, but it went to 12% every year. That should not have ever happened.
Why didn't you see it then and now you're talking about it now?
Well, you were there on council too Kathy.
I'm asking you.
Just, I'm not even, I'm not even going to acknowledge you guys because you guys always.
You live here and you're hurting the city. That's what you're doing. You're hurting.
Put it on the next agenda.
Morales, you're hurting us.
For us to fix that and remove that, you don't need to have another study just to remove it. And if you want to have another study to increase it again, then we're back to square one. So we don't need to do that. We just need to put it on the agenda and you can go call Dan, put it on the agenda for us to remove the service fee. Because if you read the report, ask for the report, you should have it too, Bertha. The report, it stipulates that, that the purpose for the increase was for the filtration system.
Sure.
Okay? So if we don't need those funds for it anymore, why are we still going to go and, uh, uh, charge our residents?
Right. And, and I'll have it on the next agenda. We'll have Dan here to explain it. I'm just sharing with you what Dan shared.
I don't need it to be explained anymore. Because I did check with counsel and I did check with legal, I got legal advice.
I just want to make sure you're fully informed. That's all.
Oh, I got the report. You don't have the report? Did you read the report?
I just want to, yes, yes.
Okay, so what did it say on the report?
Oh my God, here she goes.
The actual report calculated what you said. So I'm not objecting to that, Mary. And I'm not objecting to the fairness of it either. I'm just saying, we're going to do it and we're going to do it properly. That's all I'm saying.
And the properly is that you put it on the next agenda so that we can remove that rate, that 12%.
Alma Morales lives here, but she's hurting her city with a huge lawsuit and the Beltrons name too.
12% increase rate. That's all for, for the service fee. There's no reason that people should be paying that kind of money on a service fee. Because that's an administration fee. And it doesn't cost us more for staff to process a bill. Not that kind of money. You're, you're, how do you justify 1,800 for one bill?
Yeah, I don't know. I wasn't part of that. That was way before.
But that's why I'm bringing it to you.
You brought it to my attention and I am addressing it and I addressed it immediately.
That's why I'm bringing it now because it wasn't being addressed. And so that's why I brought it now.
It is being addressed immediately.
Now I'm asking that it's going to go on the agenda for the 15th because it was not being addressed at all. So with that being said, I guess, I did get the clarification too, that you're getting the 1 million that Jim Costa's pushed through for, um, for, for the police department. So that one went through. Unfortunately, because they don't have a budget and they have a continued resolution, the, uh, the, um, planning for the trail, for the educational trail has to wait until after election because they're going to see who makes it in. And then they'll find out whether they can push it through again for the next time. So we're not going to get the 1.8 on that. But that's what happens in election years. Because if it changes, they're not going to have the same goals when it comes to climate change. So with that being said, I'm done. So we can go ahead and go into closed session. And can you present the closed session items to the public? You need.
The board will now retire to closed session to consider a public employee appointment interim city attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Garza versus City of Parler Superior Court Case Number 21 C E C G 02953. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9.
Okay. Any comments around the public? Nope. Okay, we'll, we'll be back. Thank you. Any comments around the public? Nope. Okay, we'll be back. Thank you.
...